Okay. Hello, everybody. We haven't started yet?
Oh, you can't till six o'clock.
I did ask the wrong question. I asked if we're on and if we're ready. We've got one more minute. Hello, everybody. This meeting will be held in accordance with the executive order N two nine twenty issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March seventeenth, twenty twenty. The Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section five four nine five zero ET sequence, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom meeting information, call-in information was posted on the agenda and on the city website. If you are unable to attend the meeting, remote public comment is also available via email, a public comment email, a city clerk at city, email the city clerk at city clerk at CI dot series dot CA dot US. Agenda City Council Regular Meeting, City of Series, California, City Council Chambers, twenty seven zero one, Fourth Street. And today is Monday, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Can we call to order?
I can call the role there. Councilmember Rhino?
Here.
Councilmember Silvera?
Here.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Present.
And Mayor Lopez?
Here. We're gonna start off with the invocation by Pastor Patrick Davis, Series Christian Church.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
First of all, thanks for having me and thank you for your, your public service. Please know that you have our support and continuously are in our prayers. Proverbs eleven fourteen says, where there is no guidance of people falls, but in, and an abundance of counselors, their safeties. So if you would bow your head with me, please, so that we can pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you and thank you for the business at hand. Father, as these, these council members come together to, to solve some of the issues and address some things going on, I pray God, you give them wisdom. Give them wisdom. Show them what the right thing is to do. Father, I pray that you would give them courage to do the right thing for the right reason and confidence that you are sovereign and are moving and that you've blessed them with gifts and talents. And God, I pray for each one, a measure of peace and joy as they serve the city. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Doesn't seem like there's any scheduled presentations. Citizens Communicational. To the council matters not included on the agenda, you only have five minutes. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution number two zero zero seven dash one zero six, or expression of non-agenda items, matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda, may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda items subject to the five-minute provision. Public comments now will now be accepted through Zoom. For those who participate through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak. The hand icon bottom of your screen. If you are participating via phone, please press nine on your phone. The city clerk will call your name in order to request, for any requests that are received. When it's time for you to speak, the city clerk will unmute your microphone. Beware that I asked the city clerk to provide the name of each person that was requested to speak. Excuse me, before I asked the city clerk, the city clerk has a statement to read regarding public written comments.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The city of Series is committed to ensuring compliance with the California Ralph M. Brown Act and providing members of the public the ability to participate in public meetings as required by law. The city is required to allow members of the public to make their public statements during public comment for non-agenda items and during agendized items at designated times. Any written communication from members of the public for the city council meetings are always made part of the record and properly documented and circulated to the council as timely as possible. In the event a member of the public indicates they will not be able to attend the meeting and request their comments be read in an open meeting, city staff will do so after confirmation from the presiding officer, the mayor. Otherwise, written comment will be noted in the minutes and staff will confirm that the city council has had a chance to review the written statement if the matter is a public hearing item. After consultation with the city attorney's office, we have confirmed that staff should avoid reading written statements into the record from individuals who attend the meeting and also participate in public comment on the same topic. Doing so provides an unequal opportunity for that individual to make the same statement twice and exceed the allotted time for public comment. To be clear, even if, even if staff does not read a written statement into the record, the document is part of the official record of the meeting and a public document. Thank you.
City clerk, do we have any emails that we receive for public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have one email we received from Mr. John Osgood. I believe he's present at the meeting. As a presiding officer, would you like me to read the comment into the record?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Public comment intended to be read to the public at one twenty, at the one twenty-five, twenty-one regular council meeting. At the last council meeting, the city clerk failed to read my public comments on multiple occasions. It is my hope this never happens again as failure to read or properly sent communication is a violation of our most basic right provided in the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and reaffirmed in the California Constitution. The right to readdress our grievance is our only means of correcting the abuses we sustain as electors. Make no mistake, when my properly formatted and timely submitted emails were ignored by the city clerk because she stated the council members all received them as well, the city clerk, single-handedly denied my right to be heard in the town square literally. Not only during public comment, but at the public hearing on an agenda item. We are not able to always attend via Zoom and this provision is required by law. I am owed a public apology at least. If no apology is offered, perhaps it's time to replace our city clerk with an elected officer as state law allows so that the people of Series can correct this injustice, this injustice at the ballot box. With that said, and in the spirit of the unread public comments, I would like to request the city council address in public meetings, the importance of returning to open city council meetings. We know that the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors has never suspended public attendance at their meetings. We are able to provide for social distancing and we can all utilize face masks, coverings, and medical exemptions as necessary to prevent illness. The State Health and Safety Code requires locations to review local state of emergencies every thirty days. While the governor has the authority to issue states of emergencies, he has no legislative power and without that, no ability or authorization to waive health and safety codes. We have a county public health director allowing county meetings. Why should we be closing our public attendance option at the city level? Is it because our council members are motivated more by fear and by the rule of law? Are we, are we as city, as city council not interested in the advice and allowance of our public health officers in Stanislaus County? Do you all council members and our mayor and city staff understand the English language? Governor Newsom's executive orders clearly state may, not, or will conduct council meetings electronically. Please reopen our council meetings immediately and in the future. Let's read and apply text as written, not as our persons fear or illiterate interpretation dictates. John R. God, good, the third, District Four. The council chambers are in my district. Open them now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have anybody by phone? Zoom only? Anybody with their hands raised?
Yes, Mayor. First person is, let me scroll. Lee Brandt. Mr. Brandt, I will unmute your mic. Mr. Brandt, you're.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to say that I was able to get my first COVID nineteen shot today at Stanislaus State. We got in line at nine AM and we left there at twelve thirty. It was very cold, but it was very organized. And to be honest with you, you know, people say to bring the chairs and we did, but the chairs were kinda, kind of a deterrent because the, the line moved, you know, like every thirty seconds or so. So I would advise just bringing the stool as opposed to a chair. And thank you, Council. And that's all I have.
Mayor, next person with their hand raised is Gene Yakeley. Mr. Yakeley, I will unmute your mic.
Yes, good evening, City Council. My name is Gene Yakeley from Series. And I would like to point to, get to two things tonight. And one of them is I like to put on the agenda a possible amendment to the noise ordinance where it states that's a hundred dollar fine after the first time they come out to your, to your home. If they come back that same day or same evening, the second call is a hundred dollars and then it graduates up to two fifty and I think it eventually gets up to a thousand. But the initial second call, I would like to see that jacked up to two hundred and fifty dollars. We have a lot of problems here in Series with, with these noise violators, you know, they have live bands with amplifiers and all this stuff. The police department's told me in the past, different officers, that when the weather gets warmer, that's when they have calls. And they've actually told me in the summer months especially that they get more calls for noises servants than they do anything else on the weekends, you know, Fridays and Saturday nights. And so there's no deterrent there, you know, a hundred dollars. And I've also heard that some of these people gather money from their parties to pay these fines. So evidently, nobody's learning and it's monkey see, monkey do. One family does it, then another family does it, then another family does it. And it seems acceptable here in Series amongst homeowners that it's a, a passage of, of owning a home or, or renting a home that you can disturb people like this. Some of these things, I, I've heard them from a quarter mile or more away, you know? And I know there's a lot of people here in Series that are afraid to comment on this issue. I wish they would, you know, because we'd have more input on this. But I, I totally believe that the fine should be start out at two hundred and fifty and graduate up. And I'd like to see that on the agenda to make an amendment change. And I'd like to see that the city council get some kind of documentation data from two thousand twenty, from March first to October thirty first of all the calls they've made or went to, the police department, all the calls they went to between March first and twenty twenty to October thirty first of twenty twenty. And that would be some kind of, some sort of like a benchmark of all the problems we have with that issue. And by all those calls that they go to, maybe they could put that, that time to something else. It's just getting nowhere with this noise issue. And then the other part I wanted to say was that I've talked to the previous city council and about a town hall meeting. I know we can't do it and maybe in Zoom, but I did talk recently to Diane, the city clerk. And she said the Zoom can accommodate probably more than two hundred people listening and participating. And I also in the past suggested that on a city, a town hall meeting to educate the people about the city ordinances because there's a lot of people here in town and probably our own neighbors that don't know the right and the wrong of what you're supposed to do when you live in, in our city. And I think they need to be educated, which we've never tried to do that before. And I think we can do that if we still go to the Zoom. I think we can have something happen with that and, and I'd like to see something like four times a year, every three months, invite people to come and participate in, in a town hall meeting that's conducted for the citizens so they can learn about where we live and what you can do and what you can't do so we can make our community a lot better than it is today. Thank you.
Mayor, next person with their hand up is Brandy Meyer. Ms. Meyer, I will mute your mic. Your mic isn't.
Do you mean council members, mayor, city minister, and staff? I would like to be added to a future city council agenda meeting to discuss the Tuolumne River Regional Parks and Advisory Committee. For many years, City of Series has participated and joined in the citizens advisory committee to promote the recreation of parks along the Tuolumne River. A couple of years ago, the council at the time decided to cut the funding for the city of Series for budgetary reasons. I have been on this committee for fifteen years and have been a representative for the city of Series each of those fifteen years. I have been appointed by each mayor during that time. However, with Series being cut from the trip budget, I no longer have a vote. The Tuolumne River Regional Parks Citizens Advisory Committee serves as an advisory body on the acquisition, development, maintenance, and operation of the Tuolumne River Regional Park along with Mansy Park and other projects along the river. The city of Series is in the process of developing a kayak ramp off the River Bluff Regional Park. And for those of you who use the river, know if you're kayaking, canoeing, or rafting down the river, you have to get off somewhere. The best place is the Tuolumne River Park. Many years ago, when I was part of scouts, we can nude the river and, and it's important to note that although the Tuolumne River Park is located in Modesto, it is very much used by the citizens of Series as well. During my time on the committee, one of my fellow committee members from Modesto, Mr. Chris Guptill, created a group called the Nine to Ninety-nine, which meets regularly to clean up the river and the surrounding areas. This group has met on the side of Series and had cleanup projects on our side as well as Modesto. These cleanup projects are vital to the safety and sanitation of the river and the riverbanks. With the COVID and the pandemic so prominent in our community and spring being just around the corner, it is important that we encourage our citizens to go outside, use our parks, rivers, and recreation areas. City of Series should be included in the development and maintenance of the Tuolumne River Park to give our citizens another option to enjoy the outdoors. The park does have plans to include an amphametto, river conservation classes, trails, riparian terrace, bike and pedestrian bridge from Modesto side to the Series side, kayak and canoe launches, and other projects, just to name a few. At our last meeting this past week, we were told that the Seventh Street Bridge will be, be redone between Modesto and Series and that part of the construction will include Series. I truly believe that Series should have a voice and for our representatives to have that voice, we need to make a commitment to the city of Modesto and Stan County and show that we care about the river and the parks adjacent. The city of Series cares about our families and our parks and our rivers and recreation and the time that we spend outdoors and we should be a part of the decision-making in this advisory board. I would not do my appointment to the Tuolumne River Regional Parks Citizens Advisory Committee justice if I did not come before you tonight and ask that you reconsider adding the trip funding back into the budget and add me to a future agenda. Thank you very much.
Mayor, next person is John Warren. Mr. Warren, I'll unmute your mic. Your mic is muted.
John Warren, Series resident. Would like to remind the council again regarding the fireworks issue for the city of Series and also the garbage can totter ordinance that quite possibly should be reconsidered as the upcoming addition of eleven thousand more garbage cans to our community just in the residential areas. So these things need to be on your agenda and radar in earliest of possible convenience. Thank you very much.
There are no other hands raised here.
Thank you. The public comment period is now closed. Okay, let's move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Appointment to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Special City Selection Committee. Does the council have anything to say in regards to this appointment? We have Nyara, I can't pronounce that, Perez?
That's myself.
Was that me?
San Joaquin Valley, that's me.
That's the email? Okay. So.
The San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District has reached out to myself, the city clerk, asking for a representative to the Special City Selection Committee. As a Special City Selection Committee must convene to appoint a representative to the governing board, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board, all city representatives. So they're asking for one council person to be appointed.
They want to volunteer for this committee?
I'll offer myself.
Yeah.
I'll defer to Councilman Silvera.
Okay with you? Okay. So Vera, we'll go ahead and do a roll call to vote for, or can we just?
Yes, I would need a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Condit, make the motion.
So we're appointing for this appointment. The motion is to appoint Silvera to this appointment.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Condit, okay, so Mayor first.
Let's go ahead and go for a roll call.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes forward zero.
Thank you, thank you. Conflict, conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest? Okay. With the consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by the single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like to pull a consent item for the discussion?
I'd like to pull in ten and fifteen.
Number six.
Anything else? Okay.
Move to approve consent calendar items one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Before we take the vote on that, Diane, do we need to open up to the public to see if they have any items they want to pull for the consent calendar?
Is there anyone in the public that would like to consent item pool for further discussion? If so, please raise your hand icon in the Zoom.
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
I move to accept consent calendar item one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Second.
City clerk, please take a roll call for that.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes forward zero.
First item on the consent calendar that we pulled is number six. Resolution number twenty twenty-one zero seven, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Water Quality and Treatment Solutions Incorporated to support introduction of a new surface water supply and obtain amendment operating permits. And we'll refrain over to Tomas.
Yeah, Jeremy, Councilman Condit?
Yeah, Director, my question about this item would be, what is the purpose of this agreement? And what will the impact have on Series residents? So the, the purpose of the agreement is to add an additional supply to the water system. So with state requirements for the drinking water system, we're required under state law that anytime we add a new supply, we treat a new source. We add a new source to the water system, we are required to supply permit. So with this study here, because of the impacts of the surface water system, we're adding a new storage tank. There's a corrosion study that goes with it. There's several studies that goes along with this, which is the reason for the permit.
And then Mayor, we've generally opened this up to see if the public had any comments on this item.
Does the public have any comments on number six?
No hands.
There are no hands raised, okay.
So then we would go ahead and move to approve this item.
Let's move to approve item number six.
Second.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit? And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes forward zero.
Moving on to item number nine, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash ten, accepting the West Point subdivision landscaping improvements project as complete, approving the balancing contract change order, authorizing the filling of the notice of completion and releasing retention to the contractor. Refer over to Badi on this one.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Tomas. First, it, it looks really terrific out there, I think. And I saw in the contract where the maintenance of the landscape will be through September of twenty twenty-two. But my question is, just so we don't wind up with what happened before and, and shrubs die because sprinklers have been turned off or they're broken, do we have any plan to be sure that somebody's monitoring the sprinkler system?
I mean, we, we drive all the streets on a regular basis. So Kenny, the supervisor, is out on a monthly basis inspecting all the right-of-ways throughout all the city. Right now, all of our right-of-ways are under contract with Howard Training Center. The only way that we pay Howard Training Center is if we drive all the right-of-ways and verify the work's been done. We'll do it at that time as well. Along with that, when Kenny's out doing those inspections, we also note any dead or dying bushes. We'll document those and get them to engineering during that time period as well as what we do for Howard Training Center.
I guess my concern is that we're at Sam Rhino Park when we had a lot of shrubs die because the irrigation system had failed at some point. I don't want to see that we get to the point where the shrubs are dead and can't be saved. That's why I'm asking if there's some kind of a plan. I mean, can they do it more than once a month? I don't know because when you look at your monthly report, we seem to, we have a lot of vandalism with irrigation systems. So, I mean, if it's not checked just once a month, we could potentially have a lot of trees and shrubs in this newly landscaped area go south.
I mean, the issues with, with all hundred and twenty-ish right-of-ways that we have now, it's the same issue and the same concerns. The irrigation systems all work at night. The only way we can really tell is by doing drive-bys, usually two days a week when we water in the mornings to see if there's, you know, wet spots on the ground. Sometimes we catch the kids out there breaking the sprinklers and we see the, the heavy water spots or the washouts. You know, we can, we can try to increase the, the monitoring of all the, all the right-of-ways. It's challenging with the staff of, you know, four or five.
While, while we're under contract, will they be, will they be checking our irrigation too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The contractors, during this maintenance period, the, the engineering staff set up for us. Contractor is responsible for all of that. They'll be maintaining the irrigation systems. Part of that, they should be doing the inspections, you know, turning them on, see what sprinklers are broken and all of that. And as well as, we'll go out there and do the same thing, but, you know, it's a challenge. I mean, you see the monthly reports.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Can we open this up to public comment? Is there anybody out there who would like to speak on this matter?
I think no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one ten.
Second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes forward zero.
On the matter of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven, authorizing NV five to proceed with the service at Mitchell Interchange Plants, specifications and estimates PS and E to ninety-five percent. specifications and estimates PS and E to ninety-five percent completion and approving a budget amendment.
This is a question for Mr. Padilla. Does it seem like this is an excessive amount of money that we're spending to get to where we're at now? I mean, it, it just seems like we aren't even close to getting that air change done and we're gonna spend another two point one million, twenty twenty-one for it?
Well, um, the amounts in the contract have been in place for, I believe, since two thousand and six. So the amounts that are in the contract, um, they are a lot of money, but they do not seem excessive. And, um, we've locked in our contract amount for, you know, ten to fifteen years, there's probably a little contingency in there when, when the contracts were initially executed, but like I mentioned, these contracts have been in place for a very long time. Um, this phase will get us pretty much to, um, have complete construction documents. To be very close, you know, ninety-five percent, uh, to be very close to going out to bid, I mean, we'll, we will have, um, we will have to purchase right away. Um, we will have to obtain funds for construction, but we will be ready to go into construction pretty much um, with this next phase that you would be authorizing us to continue with tonight.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions?
I just have a comment, so you're, basically you're saying, once we get to this ninety-five percent approval towards the plans, then we have the ability to go out and, and search for more funds or accept the grants and funds that would normally go along with this project, but we aren't able to to do that part unless we get to this point, is that what you're saying in a layman's terms?
So, yeah, we will need the, you know, to finish that extra five percent, any last minute revisions to the plans, we will need the funds to do that work. Um, we could have the funding to do that with our Measure L co-op agreement that's described in this document. But during, this process is gonna take almost two years. So if we're able to get additional funding, look for grants, we can start to purchase right away, even prior to this current phase, you'll be approving or if you do approve it. We're, we're gonna go after different grants and, um, to start acquiring right away, we could break up the construction. Um, if we get part, part of the funding, we can start on some of the construction, so it doesn't, uh, we don't have to wait to do those things until this is, this phase is complete. Not sure if that, um, answers your question or.
Yeah, and my second part of the comment would be, this is expected all the way since two thousand and six, correct, to be at these certain stages along, along the road to completion?
Correct.
Is there anything out of the ordinary that would, would have been not expected when we started this process?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Padilla, this, this gets us to a shovel-ready project, correct?
That's correct, I mean, ninety-five, the difference between ninety-five and a hundred percent is not very much, where we would be shovel-ready.
I guess I brought it up because it just seems like the process has taken so long, but that's pretty common. I think, I think we were planning to build the diverging diamond, be the first one in California and Manteca beat us. I'm not sure how long they were in the process, but, so as long as this has been going on, that's common for an interchange of that size?
And, um, we didn't, we don't have the construction funding, so if we, if we had, then we're also asked, you know, Stan Cog, I think we, we ju, um, we just executed that co-op agreement with Stan Cog, I wanna say, uh, less than a year ago, so we didn't, we didn't have funding to complete the design and we don't have the funding to complete the construction. So other agencies, um, perhaps had that, the funding available or were successful on grant applications. They had that funding available to construct the project, so, and we don't.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Motion to, I'm sorry, uh, is there a public comment on this matter?
I see no hands raised, mayor.
Okay, motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven?
Second.
Will please have the roll call?
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silveira?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay. Number fifteen. Final adoption of text of the series municipal code that prohibits both the outdoor cultivation of cannabis and overnight camping in various zoning districts. Adoption of number twenty twenty-one dash ten sixty-three, approving a municipal code amendment to modify sections five-two-two dash dot zero-eight-zero of chapter twenty-two cannabis business pilot program of title five business license and regulations of the city of series municipal code to provide additional language to the existing ordinance to prohibit the outdoor cultivation of cannabis material product on all agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial zone properties. Adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash ten sixty-four, approving the municipal code text amendment to agree sections eighteen point twenty-eight point one twenty in title eighteen zoning of the series municipal code to prohibit overnight camping in all residential, commercial, industrial-related zone properties. Questions?
Yep. Mr. Westbrook, I think I have some of the same questions that Mr. Warren had. You look at, um, the part about overnight camping and it's section eighteen twenty-eight one twenty and it's in the red to show that we're adding the residential. But then if you go to the next page where it says C unlawful camping in commercial and industrial zones, why doesn't that say residential like we do on the previous page?
The reason that it does that is in the municipal code entitled, uh, eighteen, it allows for somebody to come as a guest, somebody and stay on the property.
Right.
Um, so we didn't want to, um, essentially prohibit that by putting the language here, and so we left the residential out on the unlawful camping section because it's covered in the, in the zoning code.
But don't you think that's more confusing to say police or code enforcement that is, is going to be looking at this and they're gonna go, oh, well, it doesn't include residential? Because if you, if you look further down and you look at the exceptions under five, it says persons in residential zoned areas to lawfully park a recreational vehicle, provide they have adjacent property owner tenant consent to do so and they cannot be granted more than ten consecutive days. That's with a permit, or they don't have ten consecutive days with a permit.
They can have ten consecutive, consecutive days without a permit, so really you have, uh, this is really more intended for not on the property where the other section is contingent on the property.
The one with the permit?
Correct.
Okay, so. I, I think I'm confused, I thought that you park RV on a street more than seventy-two hours. Is that not true? I thought that they could be hacked and then they had to move within seventy-two hours under the motor vehicle code.
That is correct.
Okay. So if that's true for seventy-two hours, then under five, we're saying that they can stay for ten days, but yet under the, the the motor vehicle code, they can't stay more than seventy-two hours.
Correct.
So I'm confused, because what, which is it?
Occupied versus unoccupied, so if somebody was there to visit, they could be there for up to ten days. If there was somebody just parking a unoccupied recreational vehicle on the street, they can't be there for more than seventy-two hours.
Alright, thank you.
Any more questions? Motion to approve? I'm sorry about that once again, any public comment?
There are a couple of hands raised.
Okay, let's go ahead and open that up.
First person is John Warren, Mr. Warren, I'll unmute your mic.
Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, counsel. In reference to the, um, ordinance, everyone seems to refer to it overnight camping. And I would suggest that you do not use the word overnight and just use the word camping, because people can camp during the daytime just as well as they can during the nighttime. So I think it would be better to refer to this as the camping ordinance versus overnight camping, thank you.
Mayor, counsel, actually, we do, we call it unlawful camping and per your instruction, we took out the hours.
Okay. Next.
Next person is I will unmute your mic.
Just a simple question, is this, uh, in conflict of the posting of the pedestal beetle just last week that allows for a second resident regardless of the zoning?
This, this has, Mr. Thornberry, this has nothing to do with that.
Okay, you're aware of it, okay.
Anyone else?
Yes, mayor, Gene Yakeley, Mr. Yakeley, I'll unmute your mic.
Yes, Gene Yakeley, I wasn't here the last meeting, so I'm not quite up to what's going on here, I know most of it. Is there a time factor? I understood it was like eight hours to, to leave the area and, you know, I think that should be changed like a little, less than eight hours, but then again, if these people are told to leave and then they do leave and they leave all this trash there, which they do, we see in other places, you know, not so much park lots, but, you know, highways and all these other areas, who's gonna be responsible for picking that up? And is it gonna be the cost of the city of series? That's it.
Thank you, do we have anybody else?
No, mayor.
Okay. Doesn't look like we have any unfinished business.
Um, I, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-one ten sixty-three and ordinance number twenty twenty-one ten sixty-four.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silveira?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
At the, at the moment, we don't have any unfinished business. We do have a public hearing. Public hearing of the city council to consider proposal for rezoning property located northeast corner of the East Hatch Road and Gofflings Drive to modify the existing MX two mixed two zoning designation to a CC community commercial zoning designation within the Mitchell Road corridor, specific plans and to consider an appeal of planning commission decision approving vesting tentative parcel map and a specific, specific planned site plan entitlement involving the subdivision of a two point sixteen, uh, a two sixteen acre commercial zone site into these three parcels with a new commercial building proposed for each parcel. Westbrook.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez, counsel. This item at the request of the appellant and with concurrence of the applicant had been continued to this date. They're requesting a continuance of this item to your meeting on April twenty-sixth. Staffs has no objection to that request, um, but we, because this was a, um, public hearing that was continued to this date specific, we need to open the public hearing, close the public hearing and move it forward, so. Uh, my recommendation at this point, if the council doesn't have any questions of me, um, would, uh, be to open the public hearing, close it, and then with the motion, continue it to the April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one date.
Thank you, is there any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and, uh, motion to continue this hearing to April twenty. Mayor Lopez, we need to open the. Can we have a public hearing, is everybody, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak to this matter?
There are no hands raised, mayor.
Okay. Most, my motion to move this hearing to April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
May I get the roll call?
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silveira?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Sir Westbrook, do you have a staff report?
Nope, that was it.
That was it, okay.
That was it.
All right. No new business? No discussion items? Is there anybody on the council that would like to have an agenda placed on the future agenda?
Yes, mayor.
Sir?
Mayor, I would like to refer an item for future agenda, allowing the public the option to attend council meetings in person. I have attended via Zoom in person and I believe the citizens of series should be allowed that same choice as the council is. I look forward to the discussion of allowing the public the option to attend city council meetings in person if they so choose at a future city council meeting. I have one more, uh, referral item, a resolution by the city of series to authorize the creation of a special revenue fund to be referred to as the public benefit fund and appropriating all current and future cannabis-related revenues to said fund and prioritizing expenditures to be made from said fund, thank you.
Thank you. We, we don't need to motion anything on that, correct?
Generally looking for concurrence, Tom, correct me where I'm wrong, uh, look for concurrence among council members to place those items on a future agenda.
Well, does that mean that we need to do a motion or not? Or just?
You know, and I'm trying to keep my city straight, whether a single council person can ask for that or you need concurrence.
We, we had this discussion before and it was a single, a single council person and it did not need concurrence.
Yes, okay.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, is, is there any reports from city council? Or the city manager, city attorney, departments?
Perhaps if we go there, uh, in your citizens communication tonight, you heard two requests um, about placing future items on a agenda. Um, one by Mr. Yakeley regarding the fee structure, um, the second by Brandy Meyer regarding the, uh, the, uh, attendance and trip by the city of series, so that would need, um, direction from the council if we're gonna put those on a future agenda.
Okay. And what was the first one you said by Mr. Yakeley?
Uh, Mr. Yakeley regarding, uh, augmentation of the fee structure for noise complaints. So right now, the citation process is, um, uh, when an officer is called out and Chief Collins can correct me where I may make a mistake. Uh, but if an officer is called out, they can generally provide a warning, um, generally on the second time around on the same evening, they, they issued a hundred dollar citation. So, um, Mr. Yakeley in his comments was suggesting that that should be a steeper penalty.
Did, did we discuss this when we did our ordinance update, the fee, correct?
Yeah, the fee structure was left, um, the same, starting at a hundred dollar citation process, elevating to two hundred and then ultimately to a five hundred dollar, uh, fee structure.
We had that public hearing, do you remember when, was the middle of summer, we had the public hearing on that, do you remember?
My memory is not that good, I don't know real, when it was, but we did have a public hearing regarding that item.
So if we already had a public hearing, then we don't need to have another public hearing?
No.
It, it's your call.
No, then, then we just need to move on, unless anybody else has anything else to say? Okay, and what was the second one?
Um, that was Brandy Meyer, um, wanting to be placed on a future agenda regarding the Twalme River Regional Park. To have a discussion about the, um, city's participation as a contributing member to the park.
I'll support moving that onto the agenda.
I'll, I'll second that, we could just have a discussion about that on the next agenda.
So we'll put it on as a discussion item on a future agenda, Dan, is that appropriate?
Discussion, we're not, we don't have to vote on it, correct, just as long as.
We always need to give staff enough time to not assume that, that they can get time for this meeting, because.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, I mean, if we.
I mean, they'll do it as soon as they can, but then they also have a lot of prep work to get all the background and everything.
That's a smart choice, as, as soon as the staff can prepare a report for that, then we can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, my, my presumption is most likely, uh, probably your meeting on the February twenty-second, your second meeting in February. Yeah, my, my presumption is most likely probably your meeting on the February 22nd, your second meeting in February.
Okay, we can, if we can move it to that date, that'd be great. Okay, so we will now adjourn to a closed session for.
Reports. Go back to the report section.
Is there anybody else that has a report?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On January 21st, me and Mayor Lopez participated in the First Stanislaus Regional Water Authority Meeting of 2021, along with Turlock Mayor Boo Black and Turlock City Councilmember Franco. I look forward to addressing the concerns of Series residents in this position on SRWA. I hope to address concerns such as unaffordable water rates, aging city water pipes, and the construction to completion timeline of surface water project. On a separate issue, I would like to apologize for misquoting our city's general plan at the last Series City Council Meeting on January 11th, 2021. Throwing a debate on the development agreement with Case's Journey, I incorrectly stated a service office, officer service ratio incorrectly. The correct ratio can be found in chapter six, page 54 of our city's $1 million general plan. Quote. Six J point one, police service ratio. Through a service ratio of 1.3 officers per thousand residents, our patrol arrangements endeavor to maintain the minimum feasible response times for police calls. This goal would require an additional 15 to 20 new officers of our current population. These, along with goals such as proactive policing, public safety programs and modern facilities and equipment, have not been fully addressed by the Series City Council since the general plan was unanimously approved by the city council in 2018. This document, the general plan, was drafted by San Francisco Consultants at a $1 million cost to the citizens of Series. The public was engaged in this process and contributed a great deal to delivering a message of preserving prime farmland, focusing on infill development and increasing public safety in our city. Without a commitment to follow through on goals and policies, the general plan only serves as a $1 million zoning code document for the city. This is just another example of status quo governance. On this dais, the council can decide what direction our local government takes. However, this takes leadership and doing things differently than the councils before us. I hope to address these important issues and others moving forward. I respectfully urge my colleagues to join me to follow through on the city's promises to our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rhino.
Yes, I'd like to add that the surface water project, the meeting on Thursday, January 21st, although I am just the alternate again, I also was at that meeting.
Ms. Rhino. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor. Just a reminder that the application period for District One, consideration for the city council, those applications are due tomorrow. And then additionally, we do have Supervisor Condit's representative, Rethel Fowler, who would like to speak this evening when we get to that point.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing for him, Mayor.
Anyone from the department? Okay, let's go ahead and move to the counter supervisor.
All right, good, good evening, Mayor, it's a pleasure to be with you. First off, let me start by saying that Supervisor Condit is at a Del Porto Healthcare District meeting. That's why he's not here with you tonight, but I'm happy to join you. Just a few things that I want to cover from the county perspective is that two county COVID-19 vaccine distribution clinics on scenic, in Modesto Center Plaza in Modesto, and state are operational and distributing vaccines to those that are 65 and older. We've seen a great turnout there as far as the community is concerned and people seem to be getting the vaccines that they, they need. There is quite a little bit of a wait, but those, those that do go and get it say it's well worth it. Just a little bit of housekeeping on that. The first dose only was administered today at Modesto Center Plaza, tomorrow at Modesto Center Plaza. Those that need to receive the second dose only are eligible. No first doses will be administered tomorrow. Both doses will be administered Thursday and Friday, January 28th and 29th. As far as the CSUS site, the first dose only was today and Wednesday, the 27th, January 27th. And those are the days that they will be operational. I did speak to the EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, and they did receive, I want to say close to about 4,000 vaccines. So glad to have that in the community, know that that doesn't go directly just to our county partners, but hospitals as well. So some good news there in terms of COVID and we'll, we'll continue our efforts there. A special board meeting of the supervisors occurred Thursday to discuss reallocating county resources to fill in staffing gaps where it comes into COVID, mostly those that administer and those that are data reporters. That motion was passed unanimously by the Board of Supervisors. I'm happy to report that, that'll help us fill in some issues that we're having there. And last but not least, our office is available to any consist, constituents that need help, so feel free to reach out to our office at 209-525-4470 or conditc@stancounty.com. So with that being said, I look forward to being in the community and hopefully getting to meet you all in person one day. And is there any comments or questions or concerns for me?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay. We will now adjourn to a closed session for a conference with labor negotiators to discuss one item. Series Police Officer Association, the city attorney will return to report out. Is there any comments for the closed session, please request to speak in Zoom? If not, we will move to the closed session.
No hand raise, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, on the closed session item conference with labor negotiator, the council gave direction to staff. Thank you.